...that our parents and our teachers and staff, we all feel a connectedness that we all need to know what is happening in our schools and what we need to know, just not what we need to know, but what is best for us to know and see all the positive things that are happening in the school. So this is sort of what I do. I look at all the different things out there within our schools. I try to promote all the positive stories, but I also have to work with, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly, the bad stories and the ugly as well. So that's sort of where what I do on a day-to-day basis. And how I get it done, I have several tools in my toolbox. We know that we have websites and an app that help tell our story. There are many stories in every single building. And so what's interesting is this was our first year, we're coming up on the first anniversary of using Wix, which allowed us to migrate from School Fusion, which was costing us around $6,000 a year, to this platform that costs us approximately $300 a year. And what's really cool about it is that it provides Google Analytics, which tells me how many people are landing on our pages and what the most popular pages are that they land on. So last year, we had over 202,000 users view our pages 1.7 billion times, which sounds crazy, but if you think of like mobile devices and, you know, just looking up a class or a teacher or getting on Skyward or what have you, it really does add up. And then our app helps with that as well, especially with lunch menus and things like that. I get a lot of feedback about what they use our app for, and that's one of the main things. And being able to go on restaurants.
...app to pay for school lunches or even to get on Skyward to see what's happening with the grades and stuff. So that's that. The next one is social media. We use Facebook and Twitter most, you know, I guess, most of the time. We do have LinkedIn, we do have Pinterest. We're starting to use LinkedIn more as we try to go about our recruiting efforts. But I don't use Pinterest as much, honestly. I just don't have a lot of time. And really, Facebook and Twitter seems to be the way that we're reaching a lot of our constituents. I've thought about Instagram. I'm not sure that that will provide me anything more than what Facebook and Twitter does at this time, or even Snapchat. So looking back, we had on Facebook, I'm the sole administrator, actually Josh, I think, might be another administrator on it, but I'm pretty much responsible for our Facebook page. I posted 161 times. The largest number of views was 48,200 on September 9th, and it was talking about Patriot Day. And, you know, we always post the picture of the flags on the edge of the chest, the trucks, the high school kids drive, they all line them up, there's the flags on the back of them, that gets more views every year than anything else we post. Interesting. But Twitter, 91 organic posts. It does not include retweets. Largest number of impressions was 17,300 in August, and I think that may have had something to do with not only the start of school, but with the death of Sarah, one of our assistant principals. So then also, we have YouTube. We've had, now this is something new, we just started our own YouTube account, so we don't have that many views yet, but we hope to grow that, and that'll be one of my initiatives as you see at the very end. And finally, LinkedIn, Paul Chatham's account went live in November. We have 29 followers, which isn't a lot yet, but as more people become aware and are looking for positions, I think that will increase. And I wanted to talk about Facebook for a minute, and I told Tina that I was going to call this out a little bit, because I think it's a success story, really. She and I met not last summer, but the summer before. She was coming off a pretty rough year with a lot of disciplinary issues, so we wanted to sort of turn the conversation around. How do you do that? How do you promote what's happening in classrooms, all the great things? One of the best ways, in my opinion, is through Facebook. Facebook, as you know, is not my best friend. I, you know, I have a love-hate relationship with it, but when you go and want to put something out there that's positive and show all the different things that are happening in every single one of our classrooms, that's the way to go, and it gets promoted quite a bit. So she and I devised a strategy where she would have her teachers email me pictures and a little cut line on what the pictures are, and they would CC her and, you know, of course, send them to me, and then I would throw them up on Facebook, but also put them on the website and put them in newsletters. So we would cross-promote a lot of these different things going on in her school. And we did this, let's see, 20 times, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it really ends up, you know, if you're looking at a 10-month cycle, maybe a little less than that with Christmas and with spring break. You know, a couple times a month at least, we were promoting and showing some of the different things happening in her school. And then what was awesome about it is we had a reach number of 50,462 with 1,383 likes, something that we hadn't done the year before, and I think it did help in morale of your school and help, you know, I guess, public perception of Glenwood Middle School. So wanted to kind of let you know about that. Of course, there's direct email. This is one of the things with Skyward. I can email out, I can text out, I can even push notify whenever there's an emergency or whatever we want to really, I use Skyward for this, School Messenger is the partner with that, specifically the platform I use, but phone call, email, push and text, get a message out there instantaneously. And, you know, we have, we use this, of course, in weather emergencies or when a school is going to be let out early, or there's a lockdown or what have you, but we also use it just to make sure people know that, you know, things they need to know before the start of school. I also use something called the Wix Shout-Out, which is what this looks like, a Friday night throwback. It's more of a fun-type way, it's almost like Constant Contact, to let people know about some different things that are going on. Now, this was an interesting little story, this Friday night throwback. You know, that was about the grub situation at the high school. You know, you're hit with these things that you don't expect to have happen, and then you try to put a positive spin on it. So since they were going to be playing back at the old high school, we had a Friday night throwback. And, you know, it was so cool, because people, you know, back in the day when we played there, a lot of the constituents from long ago came that night and wanted to see what it was like to be back on the old field and in the old leechers. And I got more positive response out of that than I ever expected, because it was not a good story. It was not a good thing that was happening. So we turned it around. I did 36 different newsletters. I do newsletter every other, every six weeks for each of our schools, which highlight, a lot of this gets cross-promoted in social media, on the website, and also in local media, a lot of the different stories in those. And local media is interesting, because, you know, Joe does a great job with Chatham Clarion, and he and I do partner a lot, a lot of times, and he'll say, "Hey, I can't be somewhere, can you take pictures if you're going to be there?" Or I'll say, "Hey, did you get a picture of this? I wasn't able to be there." And we help each other. And he does a great job. So when I, when you see these stories here that I say, you know, I've done that, it doesn't include everything he does, and it doesn't include sports. Because if I were to do sports, that'd be the only thing I'd do around here. So luckily, they work with Dusty, the local broadcast and print media work with athletics pretty solely. Once in a while, I'll get involved, but usually it's, they take care of that. So I did 45 separate stories. Again, it's helping to show what it is, tell our story, what we do, either in broadcast or print or radio. It all sort of works together. But you ask, well, how does it happen? It's not magic. I wish I had magic, because I could use it. But good news, this is how, this is sort of the timeline, and this is just one example. I learned about flexible seating in the classrooms at elementary levels. So what I did is I went and talked to teachers at CES and GES where they were using that at the time, and, you know, started to develop a story. And then I also took pictures, and the principals and the teachers all got involved and made sure what I was saying was correct, and then I would pitch it. And this, I do this all the time with the media. I pitch these stories, "Here's something that's going on, might be interesting to you. If not, that's fine, but if you want to know more information, let me know." And so they'll call me back or text me and say, "Yeah, I want to know more." So that Akila Davis at the time had covered that, and we also followed that up with, in the newsletters. So, you know, it was, again, cross-promoted. I also, I think, ran that on our websites as well. And then sometimes, there's bad news, and we all know this. And that's when I get to work with Randy Allen, our Director of Safety and Security. He'll be the first to call me and tell me that there's an issue going on at one of our schools. And he works with the principals, and they decide, you know, exactly what the course will be, depending on what the threat is. And it's my job to drop what I'm doing and make sure that I craft the message to be delivered when they tell me it's time to go and to whom it's supposed to go. So, you know, this is sort of a timeline for that. And it seems like, you know, it takes forever to get done, but it really doesn't. All these messages and all this information gets relayed pretty quickly, as you can see. You know, by 9:45 and by 10:15 through 3:00 PM, I mean, I'm answering phone calls, but that message has been out. We usually do it within 20 to 25 minutes of, when I receive the phone call from anybody. So that's when our crisis communication sort of gets implemented. And then what I call the ugly. And that, you'll recall from last year, when a message, not only were there threatening messages two days in a row going on, but then somebody had posted on Facebook some inaccuracies and pretty significant inaccuracies and damaging ones. So I met with Jim Lee and the other GHS administrators to talk about how we would counter those. And so we decided, well, we're going to do it the way that we always do it, and that's sending out an official email response to everyone, all of our constituents, because everyone in the community is probably seeing or talking about this Facebook post. So we came up with a face, or a fact check. That thing probably went through 20 revisions between Dr. Wood and Jim Lee and myself, but we did release it, and we also released it, we tried to coincide it with the release on the SJR doing that, so that it was what we call like roadblocks. So people were getting the message in their email, but they're also seeing it in a newspaper. And so, you know, I guess if you're not getting your message one way, you're getting it in another way. So hopefully enough people saw it. I think it was pretty well received, from what I've heard. I got several messages about, "Thank you for setting this record straight." So that was one of those ugly news stories from last year, and I hope I don't have another one. Creative support. I'm the one who takes pictures but does the graphic arts, and I also do the writing for the district, so here are some of the different things that I've worked on through the last year, which is the fun stuff. And of course, the not-so-fun stuff, which is doing the FOIA work, and you're all familiar with what that is. So I don't have to necessarily, but it does take quite a bit of time often when somebody is FOIAing us and wants a significant amount of information, and often I have to, you know, ask different staff members to help me out with gathering this information, and it does take a lot of time. But last year wasn't as bad as it has been in the past. And then I thought I would look for the future here. I wanted to let you know some of the challenges coming up includes ADA website compliance. That is something that we're supposed to have in place by January 2018, but it's difficult because Wix is a platform that does not adhere to the standards yet, and neither does Google and neither does Skyward, and so it's hard to be the one to put all these things in place when, you know, even our service providers don't have them in place. But we will endeavor to work toward that. What about Twitter and Facebook? You know, we talked with, I've talked with the principals a lot about opening up Twitter and Facebook to administrators and teachers, something that we were discussing, but from my discussions, it seems like nobody's really that interested or feels that comfortable just having everybody open to that. And there could be some dangers with doing that, maybe posting something that you didn't mean to post about a student, for example, that would violate a student privacy law. So, you know, I don't mind being the keeper of it, as long as they send me information, you know, that would be great, but I think opening it up at this point may not be the way to go. I know a lot of school districts do do that, though. Increasing video use and YouTube to reach students and community, and I'm also re-establishing key communicators volunteer group and perhaps even a social media advisory group. So that's my presentation. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
I had a comment on your last one there. My last corporation, we had, oh, you had a goal, every month you had to post something on your Twitter page or Facebook page. So they made us all administrators. Well, it quickly got shut down, because it would post, you know, maybe your personal stuff on the corporate, because you had two Facebook administrators.
Right.
And people got all confused, and so we just chose, like, in this case, maybe one person per building, that everybody can send it to, somebody that you know isn't going to mess it up.
I think...
Or maybe to you or something.
Yeah, well, and like with Tina, her staff would send her and me, so that we both had eyes on it. I could look at it and say, "Oh, that's not a violation of any student privacy." She could as well, "Well, that student's on the no photo list, and we can't use that one," or whatever. So we worked together on that, and I think it works really well, actually. I'd like to keep doing it the way I'm doing it in that respect, I guess. Because there are risks when you don't know all of the laws when it comes to student privacy. You don't want just anybody out there posting whatever, you know? So student grades or whatever inadvertently, you just don't want any of that to happen. So giving us two sets of eyes is, I think, a way to...
It was really, really helpful, though, because the people in the field got the pictures of the crops or what we were trying to show, and the people in the office that were posting it just couldn't get that. So we would send it in, and it got posted.
Right.
So it's very helpful for the people in the field to send you stuff.
Absolutely.
The question is, how do you get them to send it to you?
I hope my principals will help, you know, with that. And the principals can chime in, if anything you want to say about this, but I think it's the way to go, you know? Encourage your staff to send in. And I'm not advocating necessarily them having their photograph or having their phone out and taking photographs every single day, you know? There's got to be a balance with that. But I know in Tina's case, she would assign certain departments on certain months, like, this is going to be the physical education time, this is going to be history, you know? So not everybody was doing it at once, but, you know, she kind of divvied it up.
Well, I'd like to basically say that besides, I mean, I think you've done a wonderful job, Betsy, over the last year, and all these circumstances, really good news, really bad news, squashing rumors. It's really important that the communication director knows how to write this in effective language, but also putting the information out. But what I really want to come in on is being a FOIA officer, because I was on the board when many FOIAs were sent to you, and the tracking and the amount of work and the organizing for those years was really spectacular. So, but it's really great that we don't have thousands of FOIAs coming our way again. Okay, that's all I want to say.
I just wanted to, you know, thank Betsy, because she really does make, I know my job a lot easier as well as a principal's. And, you know, it's kind of like when you go to someone's house and they spend hours making this wonderful meal, and you eat it in 15 minutes, you know? You learn to appreciate how much work is, really goes on behind the scenes, and there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. And I thank all of us in the beneficiary of that, so thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Couldn't do without you all, though. I mean, the principals, directors, and you. You're all helping, definitely.
I would like to add to that, though. There's so much that goes on behind the scenes, and Betsy is always available. We've had to deal with situations where, you know, tragedy has occurred within the Paul Chatham family, and while we're trying to lift up our staff or something, we could just count on Betsy that she was going to handle sensitive, delicate information, or when we're a little stressed at the building level because we're nesting in something, and Randy's always there. I can just be like, "Hey, contact Betsy, her started working on something." And so it's weekends, it's late at night, it's not just, she's not here from just, you know, 8:30 to 3:30. So I just, I think the rest of the administration and staff would like to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on.
All right, I guess we didn't have any more comments or questions. Nice job, we appreciate you. 4-3, Director of Athletics Annual Report. We're going to pull some of that tonight. Yeah. It's just information only. Probably get it next month, then?
Yes.
Okay. 4-4, opportunity for citizens to address the school board on any agenda item. This is your opportunity. Come forward, tell us what you think about something on the agenda. Nobody? All right. Moving on, Consent. We've got 5-1 to 5-10. Anybody wish to pull any of them?
I would like to pull 5-10.
5-10, the approval of the CACC Intergovernmental Agreement.
Right.
Anybody else? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve 5-1 through 5-9 as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Derivich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Cup.
Yes.
5-10, Susan, the approval of the CACC Intergovernmental Agreement.
Right. Dr. Wood, can you just take a moment and sort of summarize the legalese that's on this capital area career center agreement? And then secondly, the other question I wanted to ask was, did Brandon, our board representative, look at this? And, okay.
I was at their first meeting, the second meeting I had a visitation to go to, so I wasn't there on the final vote.
Okay, so maybe you can talk about...
But between myself and 186, we were the ones talking the most at our first meeting and sent it back to Executive Council. Mostly 186 was all over it. And then they made changes and came back for the final vote at the same.
Okay, so can you talk about that, too?
Yeah, this is simply, about every four years, they come back and they look at the Intergovernmental Agreement and make decisions based on school representatives. They have a conversation about changes and protocol and different things. And so what I put on there is a summary list that was also attached that talks about Article 1, Section 3, additions and deletions, for example, list of original members, list of current members.
The highlights.
Yeah, there's a highlight list. And then it just goes down through the sections, and it tells what it was changed from and what it was changed to. A lot of times, it has to do with dates. For example, if you look at Article 2, Section 1 through 3, change from January to June. Same thing for 1 through 5. Section to our Article 2, Section 2.1, Chief Administrator to Superintendent. So a lot of it's verbiage, just simple verbiage, and they make those changes. So there's nothing of major significance that was put in there. But if anyone wanted to reference that, those documents are all in Board Docs, and certainly if you ever have any questions pertaining to that. Just to let you know, we meet, the CACC, we meet with their administration, and I'm on the Board of Directors for CACC, and so we meet monthly. And I know that Brandon also serves as a representative as well for our school district.
And then another interesting tidbit is Taylorville joined the group as a buy-in member. And then the reason they keep into this where we, where the verbiage was added as original member is there's some rights of the district to real estate associated with CACC, and we made sure that that stayed with the original members that financially invested in that.
That's an excellent point, because we talked about what if it did dissolve, for example, and what would be the distribution of the funds, because we all paid to be a part of that cooperative.
How does the funding equation work? How does that work among districts?
It's pretty much based on the size of your school and...
And that student population is intense.
You know, I think that does play a factor, but I also think that the total student body and the size of your district does play more of a significant role. I could get that broken down, so that way I could share with everybody.
That would be nice.
And isn't, I'm drawing a blank on the name, she's going to be here next month.
Jody.
Jody. And do a, give a presentation.
Yeah.
Is that in August?
Yes, she'll be here in August. She couldn't, she was...
We've got that. Okay. She said on a nice little powerpoint about what CACC is accomplishing with their students, and that's, I've been so excited to be a part of that, because, and we've talked a lot in other meetings about how we focus a lot on test scores and things, and it's become very important for me to make sure that we highlight our students, that, you know, a test score isn't necessarily the only way to be successful as a student, and this is a huge population of students that just accomplishes a whole heck of a lot of stuff in a program that's outside of what most of us were used to in terms of test scores and grades. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah, she'll come in and she's going to give an overview of the entire program, but then she's going to talk about specifically what our students are doing there as well.
Well, she could just add, if she wanted to just add a question, you know, just a pie chart of financial contributions.
Absolutely.
By schools, that would do the trick.
Wonderful.
Any other comments or questions about 5-1 then? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the CACC? Thanks, Brandon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Greg. Betsy, please.
Siren.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Derivich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
And Maddox.
Yes.
Cup.
Yes.
Moving on, personnel consent items. We have 6-1 to 6-44. Anybody wish to pull any of them?
I have just, I don't want to pull them all, I just have one important question to ask Ashley, so I don't know when you want me to ask that, now or later? It regards personnel.
Does it have to do with approving resignations or employment?
Well, my question at hand is net, when we do all of this adding, accepting resignations, it gets sort of hard to follow things through, Ashley, because sometimes there are resignations last month and replacements this month. But with the exception of Glenwood Elementary School, where I believe that we are actually adding a new teacher because of class size count, is this all net-net zero, basically? Or are we adding staff in other areas, too?
You're not creating any new positions aside from this one.
Okay.
They're mostly just due to resignations.
Okay.
At Ball, for example, they had a cafeteria manager opening. Well, then that, the person who was awarded that position was previously a cook. So then you see your cafeteria manager posted, and then you see your cook posted, and the person who got that full-time cook position was previously a part-time cook.
Okay.
So you see three positions posted, but it's really only one resignation. So it does look like a lot, but it's not.
Yeah, it's, okay. Well, you know, and that's all I needed to know. We'd look to you to give the overall summary explanation, which is like domino effect, right?
It is, absolutely.
Well, mine, basically, if there's a new position added, we have to approve the position first. Yeah. So we'll know.
You'll see oftentimes, you'll see, as was discussed, a lot of internal movement. So we have, for example, assistant soccer coach to move to head coach, so that's going to...
Okay, so 6-1 to 6-44. Anybody want to pull any of them?
So moved.
No? So we have a motion to approve 6-1 to 6-44 as presented. We have a first and a second. Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yep. Worley.
Yes.
Derivich.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Siren.
Yes.
And Cup.
Yes.
Ashley, thanks. Moving on, new business, 7-1, we got paper bid results.
There were these four companies that bid on the paper. Our recommendation is that we go with the contract paper group. They're at 21-25, and although Midland Paper said, "Well, if you pay within 30 days, we'll give you for the roughly 21-10." The problem with that being is, we've dealt with that company before, their invoice is dated one date, we don't get it for two and a half weeks, then by the time we try to process it for the board to approve that, we just felt it was a safer bet to stay with the contract paper, because then we run the risk of if we don't do that 30-day, then it jumps to 21-31 a case. Questions?
Nope. You answered the only one I had.
Yep.
Now, didn't last year, we had like pallets of paper left over?
We did. That's why we were in a paper co-op with SASED. The problem with being in that paper co-op is they made you commit at the very beginning of the year to how many cases you were going to buy throughout the year. And so they just left it at like 2,800 cases, because that's what they'd always done, and in the meantime, those pallets continued to stock up.
Nope, you answered the only one I had.
Now, didn't last year, we had like pallets of paper left over?
We did, that's why we were in a paper co-op with SASAD. The problem with being in that paper co-op is they made you commit at the very beginning of the year to how many cases you were going to buy throughout the year. And so they just left it at like 2,800 cases, because that's what they'd always done. And in the meantime, those pallets continued to stock up. And I forget the exact amount of paper we had on hand at the beginning of the school year, but it was over a semi-load. We had spent $60,000 the previous year on paper, but because we used that stockpile, all we spent this year was $19,000, so we saved a lot. So that's why we're not recommending going back to SASAD, and they didn't bid on this anyway. I think because they knew we were not going to be locked in to telling them upfront how many cases we want, and then be forced to have to pay for that whether we need it or not.
Did our price go up a lot because of this?
No. As a matter of fact, this price of 2125 is cheaper than we were paying SASAD.
Okay, any other questions then? Need a motion then to approve the contract paper group as a vendor for the district's paper needs.
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yep. Let's see, Erivich?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Moving on to 7-2, approve food and supply bid.
I want to introduce everybody to our new director of food services, this is Chad Martell.
Right. So first of all, Chad, welcome.
Thank you.
And we're glad to see you here.
Glad to be here.
I'm glad you introduced Chad, Charlotte, otherwise I wouldn't.
Just some kid standing here doing the food business for you.
Yeah, you've got the nice red shirt on and everything. Fit right in.
I ran out and got this today because Russ said, "Look just like me and everything will be just fine."
And trust him, right?
Well, so far, so good. He's got me in a good office at the high school, so so far he's treating me pretty well.
Including the khaki pants.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to see what he wears next time to make sure that we're completely different.
We're not going to get sued by Target, are we?
I hope not.
Anyhow, welcome.
Thank you. So we had, we had three, three different companies submit bids, MJ Kellner, Cisco, and Prairie Farms. MJ Kellner actually did not bid on all the dairy products, so while upfront they looked like they were going to be a lower bid, taking into consideration the dairy that they did not bid on, Cisco actually ends up coming out to be the better overall bid. So our recommendation is that we go with Cisco for the majority of the food and supplies, and we stick with Prairie Farms for milk and yogurt supplies. Any questions at all?
Well, I have one question. In your request for a proposal, did it require that the vendors bid on everything? Because I guess my question is, if MJ Kellner was less expensive than Cisco, did MJ Kellner, was it required that MJ Kellner submit a milk bid with its bid?
They were provided the same bid documents as everyone else. They opted to not bid on a majority of the dairy items. I mean, there was a number of aligned items that they just left blank in their bid documents that were sent in.
Okay. I want to clarify something. They look like the cheaper bidder, because we didn't know that they didn't bid on all the dairy until we started really reviewing the documents. When you take the milk issue out of it, Cisco came in way cheaper than MJ Kellner.
Oh, did Cisco have the milk out as well then?
When we factored out the milk for both of those companies.
Okay.
Cisco was far cheaper.
And then are our documents set up in such a way that we can do this and pick between kinds? Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's very interesting then. I mean, I'm glad this, we've really tightened down on the RSP for food bids, which is really good. Now, I have another question to ask you. What about the grants that we can get? For example, buying the commodities at a very cheap price, Charlotte, I mean, less expensive price?
I will have to defer to Chad on this. I think she's talking about the commodities that we get from the federal.
Well, with, so depending on what part you're talking about, with every meal, every lunch meal we claim, we get money, federal money. So depending on how that's used. Now, those monies were set back in January. So prior to, I guess, even this thought of this position being here, I'm not sure when you guys originally came up with the position, but those monies were set aside of how they were going to be distributed for this year back in January. So at the time, Mary Purse would have selected how many dollars went into the commodities, how many dollars went into the traditionally USDA foods, what some people call brown box foods, and how much they would have been put into DOD. So, you know, based on how, my looking at the history, it seems like they have been consistent from year to year as far as where they kept the dollars. And I think that's going to be one of the things that I'll be looking at for future years, to see what's the most effective use of those dollars.
Right.
To make sure that we're saving as much money as possible.
Well, now, is that, would that be the same thing? I remember there was a big scurry a couple of years, several years ago, where some bid had to be in by early June for the June 30th deadline. Do you, does this sound familiar? I'll have to dig up my notes.
I'm not aware of that.
I'm not either. Okay. Well, I, let me, let me just dig through some of my notes and see. But it's really good that we're on top of the money, on top of this issue financially.
Absolutely.
I also just wanted to add, with Chad, and some of you may or may not be aware, but we're very fortunate, not only to have him on board, but Chad worked with the only state board of education. So when we look at things related to state and federal, we have somebody that is certainly an expert in giving all the information we need.
I've got a lot of friends at the state board of education.
Yes, you do. Thank you.
Yep.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Well, it's my typical job, stand up, raise. No, you thought I had forgotten. We so well.
Now I suppose we ought to chop that off by approving his bid, huh? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Erivich?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Chad, appreciate it. Charlotte, thank you. Moving on to, we got some first readings, some policies, 7-3. That's all ours, first reading. They should be in there, their technology, some stuff that Chad or Josh brought forward. The new policy committee reviewed them.
The AEP was one, I forget, I think, I forget how many years ago it was put into place, but me, Bob Cox, and Tammy Hubby sat down, added to, took away some things, and then put it to all the principals that they could look at. And the other one was checkout form, which was basically taken away and added some verbiage on there too.
Very outdated.
Yes, both of them.
And that, that's information only at this point. Moving on then to 7-4, we got permission to seek bids to replace some boilers at GHS.
Good evening. Mike? In our preventive maintenance work that we do over the spring, we discovered that two of the boilers at the high school, two of the eight boilers at the high school have cracked heat exchangers. So I went to, I contacted the HLS folks just to see if there was an HLS qualified project in the mix. So I'm looking for it, permission to go out and seek bids. This was done in 2013, they replaced a heat exchanger on one, but they explained, replaced one boiler back in 2013, it was about $54,000, something like that. So I'm asking for $121,000, and the funds are going to come out of help I've seen.
Comments, questions?
He gave us a tour of the place, so we got to see him and everything. It's very helpful.
And they're broken, they need replaced.
Yes, they do.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Erivich?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Mike, thank you. Moving on to, we got some first readings, some policies, 7-3. That's all ours, first reading. They should be in there, their technology, some stuff that Chad or Josh brought forward. The new policy committee reviewed them.
The AEP was one, I forget, I think, I forget how many years ago it was put into place, but me, Bob Cox, and Tammy Hubby sat down, added to, took away some things, and then put it to all the principals that they could look at. And the other one was checkout form, which was basically taken away and added some verbiage on there too.
Very outdated.
Yes, both of them.
And that, that's information only at this point. Moving on then to 7-4, we got permission to seek bids to replace some boilers at GHS.
Good evening. Mike? Welcome. In our preventive maintenance work that we do over the spring, we discovered that two of the boilers at the high school, two of the eight boilers at the high school have cracked heat exchangers. So I went to, I contacted the HLS folks just to see if there was an HLS qualified project in the mix. So I'm looking for it, permission to go out and seek bids. This was done in 2013, they replaced a heat exchanger on one, but they explained, replaced one boiler back in 2013, it was about $54,000, something like that. So I'm asking for $121,000, and the funds are going to come out of help I've seen.
Comments, questions?
He gave us a tour of the place, so we got to see him and everything. It's very helpful.
And they're broken, they need replaced.
Yes, they do.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Erivich?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Mike, thank you. Moving on to communications, 8-1, we got future board meeting dates.
I'd like to make a comment about this schedule. Actually, basically, for the November meeting, beginning for the 2017, 2018 school year, the student improvement plan and the curriculum have been combined into one meeting. And I would like to express my very distinct concern about this because, for three reasons. One, the student improvement plan meeting is very important, and it should, we should be able to have the luxury to talk about, you know, the comments we ask questions without feeling obligated to beat the time clock on the curriculum and instruction. And the second reason is, we have just started our strategic planning process, and I have read the first draft of Larry Dirks's summary. And obviously, curriculum and instruction is at the top of the list. So in my, that's the second reason, I think this should occur at a general open meeting just as, you know, the director's report is, and I appreciate that we now assign that those director's reports to certain months. But I guess more importantly, the real, the real reason why I would like this separated is that our board responsibilities clearly delineate between having a student improvement plan meeting, disseminating that, and secondly, that we, in the curriculum and instruction report, we have a summary of curriculum factors, I mean, they ask for the policy, our current policy asks for a district report card, communicating reports to the parents, which I know we do. It's policy 2.30 or whatever. But there's, so in my opinion, the first year, you know, everybody was getting settled and that was fine. I still expect, I end request, that Jen, before the new school year begins, address this curriculum report. Now, I realize it's August, but the curriculum report is not really dependent upon whether or not new instructional coaches are added. It's, it's a summary of the district's performance. That's clearly what's stated in the board policy. So I would like to see, I would like to see that the curriculum report be designated a certain month, and that's the expectation. I mean, it can be changed if you wanted in February, that's fine. I don't, I don't care what month it's in.
We could do it in November.
Two separate?
Yeah.
Well, is that, is that really enough time?
If you have a SIP, if you have a, because the SIP, the way it had been was you had the SIP on, you know, first of November, the first week. And then on the, in November, we don't have anything slotted for the November regular meeting. So we could slot it in there.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I see Jen's not here. It doesn't really, I mean, if she wants to do it, you know, if they, if you need more time to regroup and do the curriculum report a month or two later, it's fine.
Yeah.
I will defer to you on that, but I would like that.
We could separate those two, that's no issue.
Okay.
Yeah, but I tell you what, I think the November's probably reasonable, because it's towards the end of November, but on top of Jen.
Okay, that would be really nice. And then, but somehow, we still need a report for the 2016, 2017 school year.
You will.
And it's in the board policy, Dr. Wood, you can, I have it here somewhere. Oh, here it is, let me tell you, it's board, it's board policy 2.20, and it's points number 10 and 11. So it's number 11 that we need to have Jen address that. And I know she has been working with the principals and the administration on these things.
I'll follow up when they're after them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions about the upcoming board meeting dates? I want to point out that we've adjusted the August, September, October, and November meetings to Tuesdays instead of Mondays. They're one of the ones that are highlighted. And then are we approving this?
It's for information, so.
Okay. Do we need to get a date set for following up with Larry Dirks?
We do. We've got Larry Dirks contacted me in regards to calling up the board on the document that was shared, and was looking at one of two dates, either July 31st or August 1st, if those will work with the board. And maybe if you can, I'll send out an email to see.
That's a Monday or Tuesday, correct?
I'm gone, August 31st for sure.
31st is a Monday, and Tuesdays.
Actually, I'm gone to 31st and 31st.
Probably I am too.
Well, I can check with him on, I could check with him on another day.
What is this meeting?
It's all a harsh intention.
Is it another all-day one?
No.
It's just a couple hours with the board.
Right, but what we are trying to do is establish a paper trail, so that...
Well, for that, for that purpose, yeah.
Right. Okay. That's all, okay, so that's good. We can see that. Will Shreenie be back in August?
He should be.
He should be.
Okay, well, it needs to be in August anyways.
It should be.
All right, I guess I need a...
It's on move.
Motion to adjourn in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Put the pose. Thank you, everybody.